Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Monday, January 14th, 2019 Select Board Meeting in the second floor of the Groton Town Hall. I'll review the items on today's floor and then I'll have one or two announcements and then I'll allow announcements from the public. Public comment period will take place at 7:05 approximately. Then we'll begin the town manager report. On the report, we'll select, we have the agenda schedule, discuss the local procurement process, review the first draft of the social media policy, potentially approve the sidewalk plowing policy. We will be reviewing the recommendations from the Fire Department Task Force Study Committee.
Mr. Chairman, I'd ask you to take that item first since members of the committee are here in present.
Thank you. We'll discuss the capital plan and proposed capital planning committee. We'll discuss and review a proposed fiscal 2020 operating budget. That's based on, from our meeting last week. Under other business, we will discuss establishing a ballot question, review focus group committee. We will discuss determining establishing a plastic bag ban in Groton. We will discuss the Select Board selection process for assigning residents to membership on committees, and we will not be handling the next item on the agenda tonight. Under ongoing issues, we'll review those items. Then we have Select Board Liaison Reports followed by minutes, workshop meeting minutes of January 3rd, 2019 compiled by Mr. Geiger, thank you very much, and the regular scheduled meeting of January 7th, 2019. Following that, we will enter, potentially enter an executive session to conduct a strategy session involving bargaining, the purpose of the fire chiefs contract, and we will not be exiting back in a regular session. Before we begin with other announcements, I will say that I would advise everybody to be cautious today and keep discussions, communications focused and to the point, and be aware that we will allow discussions on ideas and personal feelings on items, but not aspersions as to how other people are doing things or what they are doing. If that's clear, then I hope everybody's okay with that. If not, please don't make me use the gavel. Mr. Deegan.
What item did you say we will not be discussing?
We will not be discussing the item under request for investigation.
And why is that?
We have a personnel issue that I cannot discuss in public. I'm consulting with town council.
So it's on the agenda?
It's on the agenda. It'll be tabled to a future agenda.
Well, we're in public session. I need to ask why.
Because there's a personal matter which I can't discuss in public.
None of the board members have been informed about this.
One of their board members already informed on this. And until I consult with town council, I do not wish to inform anybody else out of overabundance or caution in protecting everybody's legal rights. One of the fun parts of being chair. Okay, Marlena mentioned you had a comment. Thank you. And then I'll open it up for other people, other announcements.
We met as a board, the school committee met last week, so there were some discussions. BNF, our Budget and Finance Subcommittee, we met last week. As I had mentioned last time when we was here, we are looking at our reserve funds to see where they're at. So I wanted to share where they're at with you and also to share with a suggestion that I did float by my committee and we are discussing. So one of our, we only have really two main funds to talk of, E and D, of course, excessive deficiency. As you guys know, we utilized $750,000 or earmarked $750,000 for our feasibility study for fluoro. When you do consider that is going to be expended and then we're going to get the reimbursement for that, when considering that, our total after our this year's certified funds will be at $1.9 million. Now, what that mean, I'm sorry, I apologize, $1.7 million, what that means is it's 4.13% of our budget. Our financial policies that we established last year looks to have a minimum of 3% of our E and D saved of our prior year's budget with a goal to obtain 4% in that account in which we would be funding our stabilization fund eventually. My suggestion, because our policy calls for a minimum of 3%, unless it's extraordinary circumstances, it is not to be utilized for our operation budget unless it's extraordinary circumstances, which would mean that we'd have to maintain educational services for our kids. We would be preventing our property from being damaged, and also, of course, both of our towns agree to the use of E and D when they approve the budget. We are above that 3%, which is roughly about $320,000, and we have capital expenses. Dunstable does utilize free cash for both their operation and their capital expenses, and we have not a significant compared to prior year of capital expenses, but I had suggested that the school committee consider utilizing some of our E and D to offset our capital expenses, which would alleviate some sort of the assessment to our towns, trying to make things a little bit more affordable. We only need X amount of savings to feel comfortable with that. So that's one avenue we discussed. We also discussed our circuit breaker account, which is not of abundance, unfortunately. I wish it was, because that is unfortunately where, as you know, this year we had some in placement, out of placement special education students come in, which just ate up all our circuit breaker savings. So every year we get a little bit and we try and maintain it. We only have $400,000 in that circuit breaker. It wouldn't, in my opinion, which as was discussed, and I may be the off, I wouldn't feel comfortable going below that personally, but our school committee is going to discuss that too, see if there's any way to offset some more of our special education cost with circuit breaker versus leaving that balance. So that's where we are currently with our budget. The superintendent was told at the meeting that she's expected to bring a budget that would be in perimeters of the budget guidance. She did inform us that the placeholder, as she, as was said here, will not allow her to do that. She will be working, again, we're meeting every Wednesday throughout this whole month. We'll be meeting to discuss it further. We have the travel consultant that's coming this Wednesday to share with us possibly more efficiencies that can be done, to increase ridership. A flash picture of that is simply our elementary and our high school ridership are the two lowest. Middle school is actually at, that's 75%. So that's pretty much full capacity of any changes. But elementary and high school, there's room for improvement there. So we are looking to make some changes to bring up ridership, which would also be in conjunction with possibly changing the high school start time as well, because the two riderships, the two tiers that run the elementary and the high school are running well below the ridership. And although there has been alter, I guess you could say Desi has granted to look the other way in some cases, the school committee had made reference that they don't want to take the chance to be one of those districts that they don't look away when you're gambling with over a million dollars of funds. So I think that that's it. I'm sure I missed something, but I'll be back again next week, same time.
Well, we won't be here next week, so please don't come back at the same time. Mr. Deegan, yes.
Yeah, Marlena, if you could give me some clarification. So basically, you said you have $1.7 million, which has been certified for E and D. Is that correct?
Correct. And the reason why that number, we didn't actually expend that $750 yet, and of the $750, we're expecting roughly about $369 back from the state. So that's why it's still, it's as if we never spent it yet, because we haven't spent the money yet. It's just been earmarked by the taxpayers to spend it this spring.
So assuming you spend the money and you get the reimbursement back, what do you expect the amount to be?
It will be 1.7 at that time.
And you said that your minimum amount would be 3%, your desired amount is 4%, correct?
Yes.
What does 4% equal? Do you know?
1.71. So we're at, we're at 4.13% right now.
So if you had your 3%, which would be the minimum that you would want?
About 1.3.
Excuse me?
About 1.3, 1.35. So there's a rough play of about $300,000, $350,000 in between that.
So if you had the 3 to $350,000, would you potentially use that to reduce the assessment to Dunstable and Groton?
We would, okay, so two answers to that question. First of all, to be very clear, I'm only one person.
I'm just wondering if that's on the table?
There is no equation on the table at this moment that our assessment will decrease. And to be totally frank, the only thing that I can imagine that would happen moving forward in order for the budget guidance to be completed is the assessment would actually increase and then the E and D would be utilized to offset that increase so we can complete our budget guidance. That is, in my vision, the only change that I can see moving forward is probably the increases in that special education maybe being offset if they choose to use E and D to do that. If they choose to use circuit breaker to do that, then that would alleviate more operation funds to do the things that we set out to do.
So could I request that when we have the summit that you requested of the various boards of both communities, that that be set as an agenda item for discussion?
Sure, absolutely. I think that by that time, first of all, we would have had three meetings in, and that is exactly, you know, where we're hoping to be at.
Great, thank you. All right, so we've had a lot of, item number seven already discussed. It's good. That's okay. Is there any other public comment period? I'm sorry, other announcements? I apologize. I'm just trying.
Yeah, I just want to repeat my announcement from last week and remind people there's a meeting in this room on Thursday of this week at 7 o'clock to learn more about the Green Communities Initiative, a statewide program that provides grant funding for energy savings and addressing, and projects that address climate change. Thank you.
Josh Deegan.
Chief McCurdy can fill on anything I might miss, but tomorrow is January 15th. It's the first day of burn permit season. The permits are available online through the Fire Department's website, which is, I believe, help me steal?
GrotonFire.org.
GrotonFire.org.
If you go to the town website, there's a link there.
And there's a link. You can purchase them online like I did today for $10, and then you can log on online and burn if conditions are appropriate through the middle of May, I believe, correct?
May 1st.
May 1st, thank you.
Mr. Geiger? No? All right, public comment period. Mr. Wallens, I saw your hand up.
Over the years, occasionally this board will fall into the trap of talking about people that aren't here. That's kind of what happened a few weeks ago when the discussion of this committee came up. There was only one gentleman here from the committee that was there to kind of answer the questions. Consider it a lesson learned that when the committee is not here, you probably want to, you didn't, you didn't get personal. Don't get me wrong. There was no personal discussion about it. But I think that when you start down the road of kind of being uncomfortable with what a committee is doing and you're doing it in public and they're not here to talk about it, I think bad feelings can happen and they're not necessary. So every board does this at some point or another, because we're all humans, but I think it would be better if we learned the lesson again.
Okay. Any other public comment? Seeing none, move directly to our item number five. Review recommendation from Fire Department Task Force Study Committee, please.
Peter, if you want to come to the table.
Chair recognizes Peter Mayette.
So our committee asked for a recommendation we voted last week, and the recommendation was for 1 for 24-hour shift.
That was very succinct. That was very succinct. Would you care to elaborate?
We will, what we've also asked for is that you ask for a, ask for a report to be here by the 28th, and we're asking for some more time. You probably need an additional two weeks on top of that. If possible. This committee was originally going to be about a six-week committee. It's now about a nine-month committee, and it has kind of grown into its new life. Yes, John?
Go ahead, Tom.
I was going to ask if we gave you till February 25th, could we get it done?
February 25th.
With plenty of, no pressure time-wise, just?
Maybe just ask the rest of the committee.
I have no idea.
Yes, that'd be great.
Well, so I'll make that motion, that we grant the committee until February 25th to provide us with their written assessment.
Just to clarify, the motion that Peter said, the committee, the committee took a vote 4 to 1 to support adding two additional firefighters, as long as it did not create an override proposition two and a half. I think that's an important part of the collective the committee took.
Right, so there's been a motion on the floors. There's a second, please, before we discuss. So Allison Manu, your second, thank you. Under discussion, I saw Josh's hand up first.
Yes, in so much as the FinComs meeting with the town manager and the Select Board before that final report would be due, my question would be for the town manager would be, what impact might the report from the committee have that would differ from the recommendation that they've already given you for the purposes of your budgeting for FY '20?
Well, if you look up on the screen, I gave the committee this report last week that showed the additional cost of adding two firefighters in fiscal year '20. On top of the two that were added in fiscal year '19 would be an additional $110,000. If you were to do it based on an override, it would add about six cents to the average tax, to the tax rate. If you do it within the budget, you would need to find $110,000 within the budget. And the only wild card in there is health insurance, as you can see on the bottom line there, budgeting two family plans at the maximum cost of the town. When we did that for the fall, one of the firefighters took insurance and one only took a single plan, so it came in considerably less than we thought the budget was going to be for the project. But you have to, as you know, Josh, plan for the, plan for the worst. So debating with the finance committee on the 26th, you know the cost is $110,000. You can decide whether or not you want to pursue that, but the committee does have to give you a report justifying the recommendation according to their charge, and I think that's what Peter's asking for the extra time.
And when would you need a recommendation by this board for the budget for town meeting?
The FinCom usually settles their budget mid-March after the school committee gives their assessment.
So then the timeline that he's asking for would work?
I think it works, but there's nothing to stop you from talking about it now.
That's fine, thank you.
Becky?
Yeah, I think that there was also another sort of subclause to your vote, your recommendation about continuing robust recruitment of call.
Yes.
Because we clearly are still dependent on call firefighters.
Yes, we are. Yeah, the department will be, yes.
Is there a, has there been a support? I said that it was continuing call firefighters.
The support for the call firefighters.
But then there was yet another. There was the request to understand in the future.
Yeah, so I also asked to add that the Fire Department, and frankly, I would say for all departments, to do a longer-term spending plan that is not just the year in front of us, but looking at the horizon of, there may be down the road, we need to go ALS versus BLS, and what is that going to look like, and what would that require in terms of criteria that would sort of trigger that consideration? What are the sort of potential, maybe demographics around how our town grows? But to be really thoughtful so that we understand if we need to be planning for an additional $500,000 to go to, to move to an ALS system, that we are planning for it today and thinking about our current spending to get there.
Allison, you had your hand up also.
I did. So I guess I have a process or procedure question. I am concerned, looking at the purpose and the charge, that there may be pieces of this that are, haven't been addressed fully. Is that something that we as a board would look at once we have a written report? Is that something to go through sooner than that? How do we handle it?
Well, you have the whole committee here, and you have the charge in front of you. Is there something you'd like to address, a request or ask about?
Yeah, you can do it that way. So the third and fourth items, I guess, are the primary ones that I'm looking at, which were to analyze benefits and disadvantages, cost impacts in anticipated times for implementation for each alternative identified. The alternatives shall include at a minimum, maintenance of status quo, addition of on-call staff for basic 24-hour coverage of fire and EMS, with retention and growth mechanisms for on-call staff, and addition of non-call-based staff to ensure 24-hour coverage. So while I'm hearing that a recommendation has been made, and I've certainly seen lots of data around that recommendation, I haven't heard or seen much around any of the other alternatives. So I'm wondering to what extent they were considered and what we should be expecting in that report.
Would it be reasonable to ask the question then, pardon me, that does the committee plan to cover the requests outlined in number, in items number three and four in their report?
Yes. Yeah, outlined with the whole, yes, with the mission statement was. Go ahead.
Yeah, I'll, Ms. Evans had her hand up.
As a member of the committee and the one dissenting vote, I do not know what alternatives we truly considered other than the 24/7. So when you say that they are, I'm, I'd be curious to hear that, because none, I missed one meeting, but none were covered during the meetings that I was there. And there are a few other reasons why I dissented, mostly to do with I don't believe we covered the, a lot of things on the charges, like defining benefits and costs. And it's not that I have a problem with additional firefighters, but I don't believe we did the due diligence on the charge and therefore had a hard time supporting a recommendation without having truly done that.
Ms. Foley, did you want to speak? Then Mr. Deegan.
I don't disagree with that. I think this, this whole charge turned out to be a lot bigger than was presented to us as, as our charge. I think, well, not presented to us, but I think it was a lot bigger than we initially thought it was going to be. So this is a preliminary recommendation based on the information that we do know. We did have some discussions about alternatives, and it was actually at the meeting that unfortunately Jennifer couldn't be at. Again, we talked about alternative, alternatives, but did not get to the point where we were able to do a thorough analysis of each of those alternatives. We got information from both the chief and Mark around the costs and sort of at a, at a high level, but did not have a chance to get down to the details of the numbers and the analysis. So, you know, it was sort of enough for us to gauge on a ballpark level of what we felt comfortable saying. So for, as an example, we did talk about if we went to a private ambulance service, right? What would that be? It was raised to us that, that that would result in loss of a lot of revenue, $300,000, I think, is in my mind. And so, you know, sort of looking at the cost benefit of, of what it would cost to add firefighters versus losing that $300,000 of revenue, we sort of, you know, had to sort of put that aside. At the same time, in our final report, I do expect that we would get the actual numbers and do a better analysis of that as opposed to sort of behind-the-napkin analysis. So we didn't do a full analysis of the alternatives. We did have some discussion, but certainly was not able to finish our, our evaluation based on just a lack of time and the holidays and everything else.
Mr. Deegan.
So we have a request from Chairman Mayette, and we have concerns from Board Member Manu concerning fulfilling the purpose and charge of your committee. And then we have comments from two members of your committee that those may not have been addressed. And in light of the time that you've asked for, do you believe you can address the concerns of our board member? Because I share those concerns as well, in that if we want to have a complete report, while you do have the data to support the costs associated and we have a recommendation, I think, would you be able to complete that in that amount of time? And then you'd need more meetings.
I'll address it to the board. We can give you a report on our best data received at that point. And is it going to be a thorough answer that you want? I'm not sure of that, but we'll, we'll address it.
So I think we can get, due to the best of our ability with the information that we do have, and possibly do a little bit more analysis. I think the piece that we are going to miss no matter what is a larger engagement of the community that is representative of the community. I think in six weeks is not nearly enough time to really understand that. Not, not for lack of trying, but for, you know, we know how, people are people. We all, we're all busy, and to try to get all of that, a representative perspective from our community, I think is not going to be possible in the next six weeks. So that part, I think, will, I can confidently say will not be in the report. But I think we can probably get more than what we've presented so far.
Ms. Pine, remember Pine?
I share some of the concerns, and I want to thank you all, because I know you've put in a huge amount of time in. You've gathered an impressive amount of data, and I am very grateful to have that data. I, in a perfect world, I really would like to have seen more public engagement and would like to have seen and will hold out some hope that we will see some analysis of other alternatives or consideration. But I actually, I think that we as a Select Board, I'll take responsibility, at least as one member of this board, I think we set you up with an impossible task. I think we gave you a charge that was much too large and not enough time, and then partway through, we changed the status quo. And that's not a very good way to treat volunteers who are giving us a lot of time. And I, again, I appreciate your time. I really had hoped, and maybe through, as this process unfolds, there will actually be the ability to actually analyze other alternatives, because part of this charge said to help us figure out the most cost-effective fire protection and emergency medical services staffing levels for the town of Groton. And what I, your vote says that you've, I guess it's hard to know that those alternatives have been analyzed and that we are getting the most cost-effective decision, because doesn't, at this point at least, I don't think the, any alternatives have been enough, seriously enough considered. So I think it's something for us all to think about, that we ask volunteers to do a lot of work. We really shouldn't set them up
Can we keep this on?
To rush. And in the future, I do think that the, the input from citizens and taxpayers in our town is very valuable and helps us make better decisions, and we need to do a better job of what we ask them to do and giving them enough time to do it.
If you've got somebody in the audience.
Yeah, anything further from the board on this item? John?
I just want to point out that when I made my recommendation for February 25th, it's adding five weeks. And I think the committee has to pull itself together and produce the best they can in, in that amount of time, because we really need to get it tied into the budgeting process and then
Sure.
And into what's going to happen at town meeting.
Sure.
For preparation for town meeting. So I think despite the fact that the charge may be larger than, than fits in the bag, I think as, as close as you can come to that is where we should try to get to by the 25th.
Sure.
And if there's, you know, a gaping hole there or something, there may be a week or so to, you know, to flesh that out.
Okay.
But I just want to make, you know, where my mind came from in suggesting that date.
Mr. Patramples.
Thank you. So mainly, I think that the board got exactly what it should have expected here. I'd like to point out the irony of prompting a committee to give you a decision before they felt they were ready, and the decision being a recommendation of yes, and then asking that committee, committee to go back and do the research to figure out why they gave you that recommendation, because a lot of the information they should have provided isn't contained in the yes. isn't contained in the yes, and they still acknowledge that they haven't got that information. I think that Ms. Evans wrote a letter to the, to the committee, I don't know if the board has seen it, that explains a little bit of why that probably happened. And I think it'd be useful for the board to do a post-mortem on this committee and understand, to ask the individual members of this committee what they thought about how it went, and have that done by an independent third party, maybe the personnel board. And you might get a lot of insight into how, how this has worked. Thanks.
Thank you. And any further discussion on the motion on the floor? Is the board still satisfied with motion on the floor? I guess we'll find out with a vote only.
Which is to give them until February 20?
We'll give you the report to the best of our ability with what we have.
What was the date?
February 25th.
Thank you.
So Monday.
So in one scenario, clearly that report comes forward, answers all of our questions. We're very confident in moving forward, and we have the time to do that prior to town meeting and it, within the budget season. If, for any number of reasons, that's not the case, where does that leave us in terms of making a decision?
Any discussion about that when the time comes? Just like we had a discussion today, right?
Just as a comment, I will remind the board that I will miss that meeting of February 25th.
I suspect that the board would need some time to digest a report due on the 25th.
Certainly.
Therefore, I don't anticipate that we would be able to engage in a full discussion on the 25th of a report that we hadn't read yet, unless we are really speedy and really good at taking information in.
No, no problem at all, so I hope that-
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying that to change the motion at all, just a reminder.
We also have a policy that says that we don't take a role in the same night that we present the information, so-
Correct.
That would assure you that you would have the time to-
Follow Monday.
Yeah, the likelihood is we would take, we would have it on the agenda the Monday following that report.
Right.
Does that clear the board? I think that would be March-
And that would be?
Fourth.
Fourth, so yeah, I'm all on.
Yep, March 4th.
All right.
I'll just register now, concerned that that's not going to leave us a lot of time.
Well, you know, we'll get stuff to them, to the FinCom about the same time the schools do maybe, so we'll do our best. All right, there's a motion on the floor. Any further discussion? Last chance. All right, all those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstained? I heard that unanimous. Thank you very much, committee. Appreciate your time. Appreciate the challenges of the scope. Okay, back to item number one. Mr. Town Manager?
Yeah, item number two, Mr. Chairman. You had asked me to take some time tonight to review procurement procedures with the board. There are several laws that cover procurement by local government bodies, and to help the board understand procurement, I've given you a matrix that summarizes procurement beginning on page five, which I'll get to in a minute. What I would also like to call your attention to is that there are two really good, there are 128, 129 page documents, so I didn't, I didn't print them out for you, but if you go to the links that I've given you, the IG, Inspector General puts out a really good summary of Chapter 30B and all the procedures, and he also puts out a very good summary of Chapter 149, which is the construction law. But if you go to page five in your packet, the IG also puts out a procurement matrix that outlines the various laws, and I'll be very brief on this tonight, because I'm sure there's a lot of research and, and information that the board can find out, but, but basically Chapter 30B has three basic rules. Rule number one, anything under $10,000 for purchasing, you use sound business practices, you don't have to advertise it, you don't have to go out to bid, and you, you know, you can keep a, a written records as a best practice, but there's nothing requirement that, that you have to do that. Between $10,000 and $50,000, you have to use a written purchase description to solicit written quotations from no fewer than three persons who would supply the service. You don't have to advertise it, but you have to give it to the lowest price quotation, and you have to keep track of those contracts. Anything over $50,000, you're in the sealed bid process, which requires you to advertise it, put it out there in the public notice in a, in a newspaper, advertise it on Con Buys, and then if it's going to be more than $100,000, you have to put it in the Goods and Services Bulletin, which is the central register, which we do a lot of. That's the basic law of 30B. Within 30B, you have, within the procurement, you have a couple of things relative to construction material procurement, which is Chapter 30, Section 39M, which also follows through with Chapter 30B, and it's the same rules. When Tom Delaney goes out to bid for his, for his construction materials, whether it be asphalt or, or supplies, materials, stone, things like that, he has to follow this particular rules and, and, and follow this through, through the process, which he does. And it, it's pretty much following the same process that you follow on the Chapter 30B that I just covered. The big difference is if there's labor involved, this is the important piece that has to happen, and that's prevailing wages have to be covered. So if he's going to go out and hire a contractor to actually lay the asphalt that actually comes in, and we, we have a procedure where they do that, we have to put out as part of our bid the prevailing wage sheet. So we have to reach out to the Secretary of State's office, we have to ask for a prevailing wage sheet, and then when that bid goes out, the contractor has to comply with the, with the prevailing wage regardless of the cost, whether it be under $10,000 or over $50,000. Prevailing wages on construction with labor must be followed, and that's exactly what Tom Delaney does there. But the rest of the rules are pretty standard with regards to the rest. Designer services is something that's very, very interesting. When we do designer-based services, when we're hiring a, a designer, we really don't have to solicit bids unless we want to go ahead and, and do it. There's no advertising required, but this town follows a process, and this board has a procedure that you've adopted that requires us to go out and advertise for, for, for design services, and we're going to hire an architect or an engineer when we, when we go forward. Prevailing wages don't cover, there's no insurance, they do have to be registered, but there's no DCAM certification unless the project is greater than $300,000 or more. So it's a pretty, it's a pretty interesting process when you go through it, but we're really good at following our, following that process when we go to head to hire an architect or an engineer to do design services for us. And then the final issue that we cover is Chapter 149, which is what we just went through with regards to the senior center project. And that requires a, a lot of, a lot more procurement that we have to follow through on, following that particular process. Prevailing wages have to be done. Anything over $50,000 requires a bid bond that, that needs to be placed with the bid. It also requires a payment bond if the contract is over $150,000 or over $10, $10 million. They have to put 100% payment bond, which our contractor did when we, when we did the senior center. If it's over $10 million, you have to have them pre-qualified. We haven't had that happen here in, in Groton, but it will be happening if we move forward with a, with the Florence Roach School, which follows a whole state process, which, which would cover that. We've never done pre-qualification when we've done bids for the fire station and for the senior center. One of the things that it also does that's very, very interesting is the sub-bids, the filed sub-bid law, which is very interesting as well. Any project over $150,000 requires sub-bids for any part of that bid that is in a sub-bid category such as electrical, plumbing, resilient floor tiles, ceiling tiles, roofing, that is estimated to be greater than $25,000 requires sub-bids. And the way that works is you put out the sub-bids, the sub-biders bid on that particular part of the project, and then the general contractor takes those sub-bids and incorporates them into his, his final bid. So this is what we just went through with the, with the senior center project and the fire department, fire station project before that. This is really good information as far as being a cheat sheet to follow for procurement. We, we use this a lot in our office when we're doing it to make sure we, we follow through on, on the rules that we're supposed to follow when it comes to, when it comes to procurement. Tommy's here to answer any questions you have with regards to public works, construction, and, and I will tell you, we have two certified procurement offices in this town who have taken the training and have passed the training. That's Dawn and Tom. So when I need help and information, I look to them a lot for, for information and advice as, as we're moving forward with the, with, with procurement.
Okay, select person, Manoukian, you'd requested this, so I refer to you if you have any questions first.
Yeah, so I, Mark, you've mentioned that we have local board processes and, and procedures that we typically follow. Are those available, or where would we?
Through the designer selection process that the board adopted back in 2010, I believe, is on the website. If it's not, I can get you a copy of that. That's what I was talking about with regards to-
What is it called? I'm sorry?
It's called the designer selection process. The board adopted that in 2010, and we follow that when we hire architects and engineers.
But that doesn't speak to the materials or?
No, no, we don't have any, we follow mass general law when it comes to materials and things like that.
And what would the process be if we wanted to consider adding additional local policy, I guess, or regulation to some of these?
The board can, the board can, you know, we have to follow this at a, at a minimum if the board wants to increase the procurement. The board can pass a policy that we, that the chief procurement officer, being me, would need to follow when it comes to procurement. But the general laws are pretty, are pretty stringent when it comes to procurement, and we try to follow those to the best of our ability, or not the best of our ability, we follow those. And we have the best time accountant in the state that makes sure, she holds our feet to the fire, to make sure that we follow those, and she will not pay a bill unless we show the procurement. So we comply with state law, or the bills don't get paid.
Allison?
Yeah, go ahead.
John?
My sense is that, that our biggest responsibility is all the steps leading up to when these state laws and regulations have to be followed. How do we get to the point where we're going to go out for bid? As opposed to how does the bidding process work? Because I don't think we can, can do very much with that. It's pretty complicated. I looked at these two documents, I didn't read them all. One was a couple hundred pages, and one was, you know, like 150, and it's only a piece of the pie. And I don't know how long the training is. It's, how many days' training is it, Tom?
Each class is a week, and you have to do a minimum of three.
Three classes? So it's three weeks of training for someone to get certified in this, which is why I'm wanting to be cautious personally about making changes to, to what the state process requires.
Do you want to go get 120 hours of training first?
It might fit better in my schedule than some of you, but I'm not particularly anxious to go do that. So I just want to make that, that point. But I think there's a lot we can do process-wise, and I think we have a couple of items that have been identified in the goals, process-wise, leading up to the point where a decision is made to go for a bid on design or, or a bid on, and we should certainly look at existing bid policy. I haven't, I mean, design policy, I, I have not read that. The designer selection process. Yeah, so that's- It is on the website? It's on the website.
Becky?
Yes, so my question has to do with the process of getting to the point of going out to bid. And I, I'm not quite sure what the official wording is, but with the senior center, we had two different, I believe, architectural firms involved in sort of feasibility analysis early on. Are they, having done, I, I guess the question is, what is the rule about if a architectural firm has been involved in doing some sort of initial study? Are they then allowed to also build on the project? Bid on the project?
That's a great question, Becky. When you go out and solicit a feasibility architect to do the feasibility study, you have to put wording in the bid spec that the successful bidder on the feasibility will be allowed to bid on or do the work on the construction moving forward. If you don't do that, you have to go back out to bid on the construction, on the construction piece. So when we advertised for the feasibility study for the senior center, we did put that language in there. At the end of the day, the building committee was not comfortable with the architect that they had hired to do the feasibility study, and decided to go back out and procure a new architect or see what else was out there for the construction bidding phase of the project, design bidding phase of the project.
But-
Excuse me.
Okay, but I, I don't want to use, so in the highway department, we've had a study done, a feasibility study for the highway garage-
Yep.
And we have not gone out to bid because that-
We did. After the feasibility, we did an advertisement for the architect after the feasibility study, because we actually didn't procure a feasibility study. We asked somebody, we got a couple of quotes, and we went with somebody that did it for $5,000 for us, who gave us a base idea of what it would cost, and then we advertised an RFP for the design bid piece, and we received four applicants, and we decided on, we decided to hire the person who did the feasibility for us, but we did go out and advertise for that, to follow the board's designer selection process.
So that is the, I guess, the particular question. It has been represented to me that the school district is not allowed to do that, that that's not legal.
The school district has to follow a totally different set of rules and regulations under the MSBA for a school construction project. Marlena, please help me out. It's a totally different process than what we follow for our construction projects. They are bound under the MSBA rules and state law when it comes to school building projects. Not the same.
So, and, and in all of this multiple pages, which I'm not going to even pretend to have read, I actually couldn't open the link, I was going to note that, if it, because the packet comes as a PDF.
You can't.
And you can't open the link and you can't-
You have to copy and paste it?
You can't copy and paste it because it's a PDF.
I will send it to you in an email.
But anyway, I'm not, still not going to read it.
They do work.
I'm not going to read it and, and internalize it all. But, but is, are we in a kind of shaky position by deciding that it's okay that someone who did a preliminary study for us and then we award the bid to them?
I don't think so. We've done it many times. As a matter of fact, we did it with the fire station. We did a feasibility study with one architect, and then we decided to hire that architect to continue the project, because we put language in the bid saying that we would consider retaining the same architect.
So other bidders know that there is a person that perhaps has an advantage?
Nine times out of 10, they want to get that feasibility study, because if they do a good job, they're going to get the big payday, because architects lose money on feasibility studies. But they want the big payday on the design and construction piece.
But does that? I don't know.
And I will tell you, the senior center building committee was not happy with the architect that they hired originally.
The first architect.
Correct. That's why they went back out.
Right.
And, and I think at the end of the day, they made a really good decision, because we're getting a really good building based on the architect that we hired.
Okay.
No, okay. Our school-
So it's different for the school.
Is raising or, yes. We accept it's different for the schools.
Okay.
We accept it's different.
Thank you. Thank you, Marlena.
Any, any other questions? Allison?
Yeah, so I guess my, my thinking or my concern in asking that this be brought forward, and I'm hoping that this won't be taken as an inflammatory statement, is particularly around the smaller dollar amount contracts, whether they're labor or materials, for local projects that may be urgent in nature. The example that kind of triggered my thinking around this was the repairs that needed to be done to Fitch's Bridge in the fall, and I don't know whether it would serve the community to have us consider additional, either notice and advertising requirements, or scope of work requirement, or something in that type of situation.
I'm going to recuse myself.
Okay, we're a four-member board right now.
I would ask, Allison raises a very good point, I would ask Tom to, to talk about that process.
Following 30B on that process, as you said, there's a lot of different parts of 30B, this 30B, this 33, and that, and this public works, this 149 facility. Following 30B on projects such as Fitch's Bridge, when that first started- Following 30B on that process, as you said, there's a lot of different parts of 30B, this 30B, this 33, and that, and this public works, this 149 facility. Following 30B on projects such as Fitch's Bridge, when that first started, in the scope of what was seen, which would have happened within a contract when we started that project, was what we needed to do. It was actually, it was going to be under $10,000, we needed to do anything. Once we got into that process, things changed. Is it legitimate to, do you want to, so five years ago, they passed a law, or was it four years ago, that changed the thresholds from 5,000 to 10,000?
It was three years ago.
Three years ago. So it was 5,000 to 10,000, 10,000 to $25,000, you needed three quotes.
Ten to fifty.
It was ten to twenty.
No, it used to be ten to twenty-five.
Correct, I'm sure.
And then over 25,000, you needed sealed bids. They lowered this because they know that some things, I mean, you had to go, instead of just going to three different car lots to buy a vehicle, there's no vehicles that are under, that are under twenty, over, that would have been, you know, they're all thirty to thirty-five thousand dollar ranges. It turned into so much of a process, they, they bumped these regulations up to make it easier for us to do our jobs without a lot of extra paperwork. So, can you guys remember Laura's prescriptions article? I don't know if that makes sense. I kind of didn't understand, but we could always go back to the way we're used to. This makes, this makes our vision when it comes to taking care of small projects. You know, Fitch's Bridge was handled a little bit, not only because, and there are, there are rules in there when it comes to changes in a job, whenever you start working on stuff, no matter what the dollar value is, if you go, you're allowed fifteen, twenty percent increases, you know, just for unknown circumstances, you have to document it, and this is paperwork involved. It, you're, it's, it's okay to go over price. You don't want to go over price, but it's okay to.
If I can address, if I may, with regards to the Fitch's Bridge procurement, an anonymous complaint was filed with the attorney general on the way that that was procured. So the attorney general had looked into it, and has determined that there is no illegal activity taking place on the way that that was procured. However, they would like us to do a little bit more in the future to avoid that type of situation from happening. And we're in the process, I'm in the process of working with town council on a compliance agreement with the attorney general to resolve any issues moving forward. But I do understand the point that select board member Manougin is making relative to that particular project. In hindsight, could we have done it a little bit differently? Sure. Did we break the law? No, we did not. Tom followed the procurement laws properly. Once we got into that project, the cost expanded, and it ended up costing more than the 10,000, which would have put us into the three quote piece. But at the time of the project, the, the quote came in under $10,000. It's once the work started that caused the, the cost to exceed the 10,000 threshold. And the attorney general has been noticed, notified of that, and we are working on a compliance agreement moving forward.
Maybe it just makes sense when that compliance agreement is completed to review that in conjunction with our policies.
I will absolutely bring that to the board, to the select board for review. That was my intention.
Mr. Petrofelsen, Mr. Deegan?
So it, it, it sounds like there are a couple of different issues that are being discussed here. The one that select board member Pine mentioned, it really reminds me of a lesson learned, and that was the, the issue of people who do some studies for you that then prompt further expenses. You might need to put up a firewall between their interest in doing the studies that prompt future expenses, and hiring them to do the work that they have effectively helped the, the town to create. Just to be more specific, the Lost Lake sewer was, study was done by a firm that then, if this, if the town voted to do the work on the sewer, would have benefited the firm quite considerably, I believe in the, in the many millions of dollars. The town didn't, but the, but a committee was then set to determine whether or not we should do a sewer, and that committee purposely chose a group that could not participate in the construction of a sewer. That group was there to tell us whether we needed a sewer, or whether a sewer would benefit us. And it turns out that group helped us to understand that we did not need a sewer, and that a $12 million sewer would not have benefited us at all. And so I think the point is, when you hire someone who's going to tell you that you need something, if you also, if that person stands the game from that determination, you should structure your agreements to be sure that the town is best served by those agreements. Thank you.
Mr. Deegan?
Yes, thank you. I'm speaking as an individual now, and as a business owner that was requested to bid and perform work on the Fitch's Bridge project. That has been brought up. And while I understand board member Manougin's question, and I think it's a very valid question for moving forward and how to understand things, I need to set the record straight on this, because I really don't want to have any aspersions on my reputation as a businessperson, and as a board member. I was in Poland in August of 2017, and I, excuse me, eighteen, and I received a call from Tom Delaney from the DPW concerning a wall collapse that occurred over at the Fitch's Bridge. And I said I'd be happy to look at it as soon as I get back in late August. I came, I looked at it, and he said, what's it going to cost to repair it? I put together a quote that came in just south of $10,000, a little north of $9,000, based on the conditions of the collapsed wall. When we began the work, and the wall that had collapsed into the river was cleaned up, and we saw that there was no foundation under the wall, I very easily could have completed the wall for the amount of money that I quoted. However, doing due diligence and proper construction techniques, I said, if I put this wall back together, there's no foundation. There was nothing under this wall. There was an original contract as part of the CPC grant for the reconstruction of the bridge that allowed for the engineer to make a determination on the existing walls if they were structurally sound. In my opinion, that was overlooked. That said, the wall collapsed, and it was my job to make recommendations to repair the wall properly. You couldn't see it at the time when I did the quote, because you had a pile of stone sitting in the river, and some stones there. So I asked Tom Delaney to come down, along with Troy Conley, who is his second person, and we talked about alternatives. The alternative was to build the wall in a different fashion than existed, putting 50 tons of riprap stone into the river and changing the angle of the wall. Tom said, how much more is it going to cost? And I gave him a price. Tom said, as procurement officer, do what needs to be done and proceed. That's what I did. And after the work occurred, anonymous individuals filed complaints with the State Ethics Commission, filed complaints with the attorney general's office against me for my actions. And I found that to be almost retribution for an action that I took against the President of the United States when I was in Washington, DC. And I find that, there was no threats. There was just a explanation of how I felt about him. That said, I think I've explained myself, and I really don't like the aspersions that are being cast here this evening. And to set the record straight, I will no longer perform any work for the town of Groton, as long as I serve as an elected official. Thank you.
Any other member wish to discuss this item further? Mr., John?
Mr., you, you at the end of the line, clerk. Okay. As I look at this, for someone to have gotten on the wrong side of, of what the regulations require, they would have to have known ahead of time, ahead of time, that the magnitude of this task was larger than what it was originally described to be. And I have not seen or heard one iota of evidence that suggests to me anybody understood exactly how much work was going to be, needed to be done on a river that's running with a pile of rocks on the bottom. So I, you know, we've been through this a number of times. I think the learning values have occurred, and recycling this every few weeks, I just, I don't know what we're gaining from it. My thoughts.
Tom?
You, well, you're right about that, John. And, and what John was saying.
There is, this is one of those projects where you could, you could not see what the problem was. You could have had any engineer out there, you could, like, they probably would have done test borings and stuff, and they probably still wouldn't have seen what was behind that wall until you take it down. And that's, and, and that's why 30B is flexible, and it does understand when these things happen. You know, you do your best, your ability to make sure to do it where you follow the rules correctly. But there's also, when you don't, when you can't, you take pictures, you document, you explain it, you track it, and you let people know. And that's, and they, they have avenues for that, for that purpose, because they know that you don't know the answer to everything when you start something.
Yeah, Allison?
So I guess I just want to say that I agree with what John said. It was not my intent to cast dispersion, and I personally had hoped to avoid rehashing this project again. I, I think there are potentially changes that we should be considering to our policy. I don't know as an individual how to talk about those changes or make recommendations for those changes, without it kind of becoming the, you know, every two months rehash of this project. You know, so I, as, as an individual, I guess, will, will back off and assume that the board does not support contemplating changes to the, the policy. I don't know quite how to handle this.
Okay, a lot of hands at once. Let me go with Becky, since she's been out of the way.
I, I think it's always important to be careful about how we operate. That goes without saying. I don't personally have any issues with Fitch's Bridge work, or with Josh's work on it. I, I do, I do have some concern about the, the other issue that we just talked about, about having someone do the study, and then they tell us what we need to do, which involves spending money, and then they are the person who, who bids on it and does the work. That may actually be a totally fine and very effective way of doing business. But I think we need to be careful about making sure that, that it's the right thing to be doing, and not just automatically, you know, request an informal study from somebody who has done work for us before, and then sort of say, wow, it makes sense to, you know, hope that that person also bids on it, and move forward with that. Because there is a risk. And I'm not, I don't, I don't have enough expertise in the field to suggest what we might do, other than I want us to be very careful about it.
Tom?
Real quick. So, well, I can, I can, to mark to circle you guys. So Trish, Trish is the president downstairs in our, the accountant. She has a real nice sheet that we have to fill out and hand it every time we do something. So besides this stuff here, she already has extra backup paperwork we have to do. So it's not like we follow the law. She has-
As I said, no bill gets paid. No bill gets paid unless we comply.
Oh, exactly. And she sees something on there, she doesn't understand what they say, or Sarah sees something, she doesn't know what it is, she's on the phone. So what is this part number that says, what does this thing mean? They're, they're pretty detailed. If they see something they don't understand, or if it's not the right dollar number, we're going to get the paperwork, and they'll pay it. There is, so there is another backup to us as well, the set of order office downstairs.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I, I understand where Becky's coming from on that. It's a legitimate point. I will tell you, though, the regular procurement of the 30B in chapter 149, we are pretty good, very good actually, at complying with the law. I have a lot of faith in Tom, I have a lot of faith in Don, and the department heads that know the law pretty well. And as Tom just said, and as I said earlier, we have a catch-all downstairs in that accountant's office that makes sure we're 100% compliant with procurement laws. I'm not sure if we need additional policy.
So I, if I may, since I think everybody else has spoken, I think we have a perception challenge here, not a legal challenge. And I think we've already heard from a recused member, an individual citizen now, excuse me, that one of those perception problems will not be an issue while they're in town, they're on the board, or an elected member. I personally would also, myself, probably not want to bid on anything town services while I was a member of the, of the committee, not only from the fact that I could, you know, be challenging to work under two auspices, but that, you know, I don't think it's a good idea. The, the optics are bad for me. I don't necessarily know that there's a problem with setting a policy greater and beyond the conflict of interest laws, or the things that prevents certain people in certain positions from bidding on projects, if that was your angle, Ms. Manougin. I'm only guessing. I certainly would not see that as an issue, because I think it's a reasonable perception issue. I also think it's reasonable to have questions when, as I did, going back to that senior, that, sorry, the, the lake situation, where I could feel that there was something off by the individual pitching the idea, and it just didn't seem like it was needed. It was more like, hey, you guys told me you wanted something, and here I'll make it happen. I think that we can be careful to educate the public when we choose to use a feasibility study that will have potential, will, excuse me, potentially they're going to be the ones that can also bid on the construction, and I think we should be very careful to clarify that, so we prevent optics from being bad. Like, you guys can tell us, they were told that they could also build the project, so they came with a really low bid on it to get that work. Or we should at least let people know, there's a lot, big chance they bid really low on this, so they can get the work. And if people are so forearmed and forewarned with knowledge, and they still make that choice, I think that sets them better than learning after the scenes that they think they got duped. So I don't think there's any legal issue here. I think I'm hearing perception issues, and challenges, and people not understanding law. That's one reason I wanted to bring all this to light, following Ms. Manougin's recommendation, to have awareness of all the laws, awareness for following the laws, and that there's some challenges in perception. So I'll assume that we can, we're done with this topic, and we can move on? No?
Tangentially, on, since the Lost Lake sewer has been brought up, if I may, it is my recollection that last year, when the Lost Lake sewer was included in the capital budget, our board directed that it be removed, because we had heard a different study that said there is no value in building a sewer in Lost Lake. And so I was surprised to see it on this year's capital budget. I spoke to the town manager. I said, we told you to take it off last year. I want to check if perhaps, make sure that I remember that correctly. Because we did hear from a consultant, from the Lost Lake watershed report, we heard last, I want to say December of 2017, about what was causing the problems in Lost Lake, and that a sewer would do absolutely no good at solving them.
Okay, I'm, I'm at a loss. I thought this was done a long time ago.
Removed from the capital plan?
From a long time ago, like it was not a town project many, many years, like before I even got on the FinCom.
Yeah, well, it was on the capital plan last year for five years out. I think it's still on the capital plan this year for five years out. I don't see any reason, I mean, it's, it's, it's the residue from that earlier consultant who said we needed it.
My fault. If I fail to take it off, I will remove it from the capital plan.
It's not an extension?
It's not a big deal. No. I apologize for not taking it out of the plan.
I mean, there, there is some talk out there that I've heard, that, that people are thinking about the feasibility of bringing of that connection that comes into four corners from here, up into the Lost Lake area. But I don't, I don't know who's behind it. I don't know. I don't believe there's any committee that's been there to look at that.
We're off topic.
I think it's just conjecture.
All right, let's, we're off topic. If we want to have another item to discuss-
Yeah, I'd be, I'm sorry.
Then we should put that on a future agenda.
No need.
Okay. Is there anything else on this item? Allison, would you like to have a future agenda item to discuss a policy on limited elected officials' participation in procurement?
I am not requesting, so.
All right, so none has been requested. If any member or any would like to request that, please let me know.
Mr. Chairman, I've been working with the, oh, sorry.
Okay, sorry. Mr. Deegan?
We live in a small community here in town. About 11,000 people. We have volunteer boards everywhere we go. There should be nothing on the books for a policy to procure a businessperson in the- the town of Groton from bidding on a project provided they file a disclosure with the town clerk and to allow a board to make a decision to award a contract or a department. You are taking the fundamentals of capitalism and stripping them away. You're disincentivizing individuals to volunteer for boards and to offer their services. If everything's above board and these processes which are shown here are followed, and you were to put something in place like that, it's wrong on so many levels. What I offered up is my own solution to dispel any favoritism that is perceived by individuals in the community, was done so of my own free will. But to preclude anyone else from doing that, you're going to have less and less and less people volunteering. I urge your board, without me, not to take such action.
There's no motion and there's no sense to take any action.
There's nothing, there's no motion on the table. This is a discussion and a presentation. I think we're going to move on. Mr. Gigan, would you like to unrecuse yourself for the next time? Okay. Consider us a form of reward then still. No, all right.
Mr. Chairman, I've been working with Select Board Member Menugian and our Human Resources Director and IT Director to draft a social media policy. It begins on page 10 of your packet. My intent was to bring it to you tonight per your policy to look at something for the first time, discuss it and decide whether or not you want it on a future agenda for adoption. You've all had it for over a week. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at it or discuss it or have any comments. I think it's pretty good.
We don't think, don't think we got it a week ago, Mark.
I sent it out to the board well before the packet. Well before the packet. I'll send you the email that showed you that I sent it to you before.
Guess I missed that.
So anyway, if you need more time, I can schedule this on a future agenda, but I just wanted to get it to you to talk about. I think it's a pretty good policy. I think Melissa and Mike did a nice job putting this together. Happy to hear any comments the board has.
Yeah, I didn't know that again. So I just had a couple items and I'm happy to send them to you guys. The first one was in Section 1 under Number 6. I'm not sure that the Internet can be included as part of a town system.
I'm sorry, say that again.
Under Paragraph 6, or Definition 6.
Town systems?
Yeah. It kind of goes through a whole bunch of things that make sense, and then it says in the Internet, which isn't really.
Well, I think you could change it and say, and the towns' networks.
Well, that's, I think, yes.
As opposed to the Internet, you're fine.
Yes, agreed. But the Internet, not so much.
No, no, Al Gore owns the Internet, come on.
Exactly. We're not getting into that. Well, my comments don't open.
Was there, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Allison.
No, go ahead, Becky.
Did we discuss this at any point earlier? Was there a particular trigger for this?
I think it was discussed as part of the board's goals at one point a while ago to look at the social media policy. I could be wrong. That was my recollection.
Are you questioning whether or not we should have a social media policy or just...
No, I just, I'm questioning whether I missed something because it came to me as a surprise, that we had, that someone had worked on this. That's not a bad idea.
Was this on the agenda list that I sent out in mid-December for what would be on the topics for January?
I think this was something I was working on, based on board input. So I hate surprising the board members. I thought this was something we discussed.
No, I'm trying to be very careful at sending out in advance, so you guys have plenty of time to know what's going on. About the 15th of the month, what you can expect for the next month. But invariably, there will be things that come up that aren't on that list because I can't project the future very well.
Mary was on your list.
It was on my list.
Yes, it was.
So we've had a month's warning that this was going to be available, so this shouldn't be surprising anybody because on December 15th, I kicked out a list of what would be on the agenda in January. So rather than us talking about emails that didn't show up or notifications didn't happen, let's all acknowledge that we're human, we're very busy, we don't see things all the time, we don't record everything all the time. And let's get past the incessant smallness of whether or not something was on a discussion or not and focus on the item. Please.
Just going back to my couple of items. Under Paragraph 3, I think it's on Page 5, under Section 3, it talks about individuals being allowed to use social media for work purposes and such, and I just think we need to think through how we keep track of who is and who isn't permitted. You know, that it says department heads shall allow employees, and then in terms of the training, that it references a couple different places. What will that be? How do we track that? And then the other big thing I think that we may want to think about, maybe we've already thought about it, is whether town postings on social media should allow comments or not allow comments. And then the last thing is just records retention, that if social media requires records retention, I don't know how we comply with that.
Mr. Gigan. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, that's probably part of a records retention policy more so, but.
In general, I think this is a very good idea. And as it relates to the use of town assets, employees' time while they're at work, using town facilities, whether it be a cell phone, a town computer, I think that's fine. I think that when somebody's using their personal device, as long as they're not disparaging the town, representing their opinions as being that of a board or a committee on which they serve, or as part of a department, on their own time, I think that's important to note as well. But once an individual loses their First Amendment rights of free speech. Is that correct, the First Amendment?
Yes.
Thank you. That's when I think it crosses the line, and we need to be very careful that you do not usurp an individual's rights to echo and speak about politics outside the town of Groton or even with inside the town of Groton. It's a dangerous slippery slope to do that. And I think you need to look at Section 2 a little more carefully.
Are you drawing for page?
I'm looking at Page 12 of 65, Section 2, Guidelines of Personal Use of Social Media. I understand the point of this. And to disparage the town of Groton if you're an employee or a board member is the right of an individual to disparage them. It just is. It's a fundamental right that's part of the Constitution, and you've got to be really careful before you codify this and vote on this. I know it's not encouraged, and I know it's probably not desirable, but it's anti-American. That's all I'm saying, to do something like that. You need to carefully look at this to make sure it doesn't do that.
If I can make a suggestion, Mr. Chairman, if the individual board members can take this document and mark it up and redline it and get back their comments to me individually, just to me and only me, I will update the policy and send it back out to the board for review and consideration at a future meeting. I don't know if there's any push on this. One of the board's goals is to review all of your policies, so maybe this is something we can add to that, to that review and bring it back, because I think you've all raised some pretty good points.
Has this been through council?
It has not.
Because there are several Massachusetts regulations, as well as federal regulations, on an employer's right to look, even act upon someone's social media contact, I'd like to go through council before we do anything else, because there have been a lot of changes that have happened over the past three or four years related to whether or not you can even ask an employee for their password so you can look at their social media. So to keep in mind, I could restrict my social media posts to only a set of five people, and I could be disparaging the town all day long, but since nobody, except for those five people, can see it, the only way the town could enact this policy is to request access to my account. And the Supreme, you know, the Supreme Court said, you can't do that, right? So we need to make sure this goes through legal council and make sure it's a policy that we can stand, we can actually legally uphold before doing the else, in my opinion. I see both John and Becky.
Code of Becky because she went to me first.
Okay, so thank you.
I was going to ask, did you take models from anybody else or is this...
Yeah, this was a culmination of a lot of social media policies that we found from other towns as part of a search, and this is how we put this together.
Right. So, I mean, it raises...
I like the idea of going to council.
I think, yeah, and it raises a lot of questions. For instance, say I am at a protest about something at a national level withholding a sign, and someone takes my picture and posts it on their social media site, you know, that kind of, and then someone objects. It's a good idea. I agree with Josh, we should have something in writing, but I think it's going to be very tricky to enforce fairly and legally. So we should get our town council's advice at least.
Mr. Gigan.
Just two quick things. I first became aware of efforts that were going on to create this at a meeting with Allison a couple months ago, which was the Massachusetts, and they still call themselves Selectmen Association, out at Devon's on Saturday. And they put a lot of work into it to create a sort of starting place for everybody. So I wasn't anticipating that when Allison and Mark and... Our HR.
Melissa.
Melissa, put this together, that it would be perfect on the first pass-through. I do want to point out on Page 11, above where it says A. Definitions, right, it says, "Nothing in this policy is designed to interfere with, restrain, or prevent employee communications that are otherwise protected under the law, i.e. First Amendment, whistleblower, and union activities." So it leaves, the way it's put together, and I don't know that it can ever get much tighter than that, is it leads to somebody having to use their judgment of whether, you know, whether they're violating something that the town has said, or it's, you're violating somebody's rights. I mean, just can't get it down to black and white.
Yeah, but I read that, and I think that once I read that, I was comfortable, but then I dug in deeper and it's, you know, do as I say, not as I do, policy. And it needs to be cleaned up. That's all I'm saying.
Well, I think Mark has given us a plan. Everybody mark up your thoughts, send them in to Mark.
Send it to council.
And he'll send the whole package to council, and let's see what they come back with.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Next item on the report, we already covered Item Number 3. So Item Number 4 is, I updated the sidewalk policy that John and I reviewed, and John had noticed that I had put in a previous version of it. I went back, and if you go to Page 21 in your packet, I updated the policy to reflect that change, and I believe, John, please correct me if I'm wrong, that this is the wording that the board had requested that says on the policy, "It is recognized by the Select Board that for public safety reasons, certain sidewalks located in public way must be cleared from time to time of snow and ice. The town maintains the sidewalks in the town center and West Main Street and West Groton. They should be cleared as soon as time permits. After the roads are plowed, the attached map identifies the sidewalks that the town will maintain. Clearing snow and ice from other sidewalks is the responsibility of the abutting property owner, police clear year, abutting sidewalks in a timely manner." I believe that is what the board had asked for, and I would ask the board to consider adopting that policy tonight.
Is there a motion or any discussion? Becky?
So the attached map is not here.
I know, I didn't, it's the map that I had given you before and I did not put it here.
However, so Tom Delaney is here. I want to make sure that our intention and our decision was relayed correctly, that we are no longer going to plow Partridge Berry.
Yeah, it doesn't reference it.
Well, it would presumably reference it on the map, that's why I was looking for the map.
The board's direction was not to do subdivisions any longer, so that would be removed from the...
The map.
The map, correct.
And I just want to make sure everybody's on board with that.
Okay with it.
Okay.
That's the board's decision. The board already made that decision.
Yes, I know. I just, I knew that we made it and it might be controversial.
When we put this map on, when we put this policy on the website, we will attach the map that will remove Partridge Berry Woods from the area that we plow.
Thank you.
We shouldn't do anything controversial this evening.
Has Partridge Berry Woods's river bend?
Yes.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
No, it's a good point.
It's the name of the subdivision.
Allison?
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the sidewalks' no removal policy as presented.
Thank you. Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Anything from the public, please raise your hand. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Any abstentions? I heard that unanimous.
Mr. Chairman, as discussed by the board, I set aside time on this week's agenda for the board to discuss the Need for Capital Improvement Planning Committee. As I've stated to the board before, I'm not in favor of the creation of the committee as I believe that for the last 10 years, the finance team and I, in conjunction with our department heads, have done a really good job of preparing and implementing the plan. So I'm asking the board to please review the plan that I submitted on December 31st, and I'm just trying to understand how a committee will improve the process and the review done by the Select Board and the Finance Committee. More importantly, the revised and current Groton Charter puts the responsibility of preparing the plan squarely with the town manager. Section 6 statute six of the charter reads, as I've noted here in the plan, and the Charter Committee, when they took up, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe you talked about this particular issue and made no changes to that section of the charter. So it is the responsibility of the town manager under the charter, and it's been voted twice by the town that that be the case. Please note that in 2009, the Groton Town Meeting voted to abolish the Capital Planning Committee based on the adoption of the charter and putting the responsibility with the town manager. So I just wanted to put that out to you tonight and ask you to discuss it and determine it. In addition, I think I've given you additional information where when Wall Street reviewed our finances, when they were determining our bond rating review, that they really noted our capital plan in their review and commented on the job that we do relative to capital planning. Thank you.
Would you like to start us off? Do we have a copy of the capital plan on our drives, or do we have to have our hard copies?
You can get it, it's on the town's website. I can get it up on the screen if you want to see it now. Do you want me to get it up on the screen, Barry?
What is the members' discretion? Would they like to review the capital plan, or would they like to talk about the committee first?
This is not necessarily a review of the capital plan, in my opinion, as opposed to a philosophical discussion about the creation of a committee. So while we could spend time reviewing the capital plan, I might suggest that as part of the agenda item where we're going to discuss the budget, if we could do that portion then and discuss our philosophy around this, I think that might be more appropriate. I defer it on my fellow board members.
You know, I'll take that under Move/Discuss the Capital Plan to Number 7, Item Number 7 on the agenda, since it's similar and related and the public can regularly anticipate that might happen, and we'll narrow this discussion to just the proposed Capital Planning Committee. Is there any member that objects to that? Thank you, all right. We're going to narrow that discussion to just the discussion about the Capital Planning Committee. Or I believe we have a different name for it now on our goals?
Yes.
So Allison, I'm sorry for keeping...
Nope, that was part of what I was going to kind of start with, is that when we created our draft goals and we're still working to refine them, we put forth a recommendation of one of our goals is to create the Major Initiatives Capital and Asset Committee. And that that, to me, captures more our intent than does a straight capital plan committee. I think we're looking for a deeper understanding, not only of capital needs, but other projects and things that are being considered, not necessarily within the next five years, but beyond that. You know, for me, as an individual, we have a couple of projects pending under capital... that have not been, whereby the scope or cost has changed since they were last included in the capital plan, and I would hope that a committee such as this would be better able to circumvent those sorts of things.
Becky?
I was also gonna say that it, it seemed to be pretty important to most of us, if not all of us, in the, in our various discussions about our own goals, to form such a committee, and from my point of view, I, I feel like I keep saying this, but maybe I haven't said it tonight, I think that we, as a board, always will be in a position to make better decisions if, if we have more input from taxpayers and citizens. I, I am not, I don't see this, Mark, as a criticism of the way that you have managed the capital plan over the years. I see it as an enhancement to that process, and the fact that there are some fairly major things coming up, and money seems to be getting only tighter and tighter, I think that we'll do a better job if we have such a committee that we all seem to think was an important thing to have. It isn't just capital planning, as we've kinda renamed it, this prioritization and, and management of scheduling into the future. And again, not, not because of a criticism of the way that you've done it.
Josh, sorry, I'm looking around.
Sure. To address the Town Manager's concerns relative to chapter six point six of our charter, I certainly think that as part of your budget, that you were required to deliver by the end of December of each year, Mark, that you absolutely need to include a capital plan, and you've done a very good job of it. That said, I think that the capital plan is a moving target, and some items that are on that capital plan, that are planned for any given fiscal year, sometimes get pushed off to a future year, or sometimes get accelerated based on the need of the capital items that are being considered, based on the condition of that equipment or that asset. That's one component of this, and I think that's an easier component than the bigger picture. One of the goals that we had last year was major initiatives, and major initiatives are projects like the senior center, or like the fire station, or like if Prescott School decides to get CPC funding in the future for renovation, or like the Highway Garage, which is gonna be under consideration. And projects like that, it's your job to propose them, accelerate them to the level that it gets before our board, the Finance Committee, and ultimately Town Meeting. I think that by merging the, or creating a committee that merges looking at such items as capital plans and major initiatives into one committee called MICA, which is what we proposed, M-I-C-A, it allows a second set of eyes and ears to vet these major initiatives, and look at the long-term financial impacts, even things such as going to a twenty-four-seven fire department, and, and what the ramifications are on the tax rate, and what it's going to do to put us into potential override situations, situations moving forward. And, and things that are on the horizon, that we haven't even really considered, or just in the infancy, such as, you know, maybe twenty-five or thirty million dollars for Florence Roach at taxpayer expense. If we don't weigh what all of the competing interests are for the money that's in the taxpayers' pockets, and have a committee that stands between you as the proposer for it, and the advocate for it, and the taxpayers who have to fund it, 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 it's just not a good idea to throw it into the Select Board's lap.
Isn't that the role of the Finance Committee?
No. The role of the Finance Committee is to take a look at the budget on a year-over-year basis, and compare it to the previous year, and see what we can afford and what we can do. Could the Finance Committee do this job? Sure they can, and sure they can look at your capital plan. But I think this is a bigger-picture planning project, and this is a committee that will look at the bigger picture, to advise both you, the Select Board, and the Finance Committee, when they do their deliberations to make recommendations on projects like this. I mean, I could go on, and I'm done, though, thank you.
John, you wanna take a step?
Well, I, I think it would behoove us to put some time into getting some definition around MICA, so that it's clearer what we envision MICA doing, and what we envision the Town Manager doing when it comes to the full length of, of the continuum for capital planning, which some of that state, would, would always say, I mean, how it's gonna be financed is, is done through the treasurer, under your supervision, and so forth. So, I think there's roles in there for, that we need to explore and understand better before we make a decision.
Yeah. So, there's two pieces, I think, that's missing from our capital project plan decision-making, and that's the prioritization, which is one of the key things, I think we kilted in there. And unfortunately, that's a policy issue, and that's, that's not a, in my opinion, that's not something that the board should relegate to the Town Manager, and be making trade-offs between fires, police, EMS, you know, and school, and other things, roads. At the end of the day, that's up to the, the policymaker, the elected board, the, the board, the Select Board, to, you know, be able to derive that guidance, and give, give, give direction to modify potential future capital plans. I don't think we're enabled, as a board or the future boards, to do that without some sort of, some sort of expertise, whether consultant, or a committee of consultants, or whatever it is, to help us understand when you're gonna have to trade A for B, which, you know, again, at a certain point in time, there's only, there's only a fixed amount of money. The other thing, I think, that I would love to see is the potential analysis of schemes that can allow for a trust fund to be set aside, that after thirty years, all of Grotton's capital plans are taken care of by a trust fund. Similar like an IRA or a 401K, you put away for retirement, and you retire, you live off that money. It may mean you put twenty percent away for thirty years, but after thirty years, you don't have to worry about capital every year. It's not necessarily gonna take care of people today, but it'll take care of the future of the town. Either way, you know, that's not gonna, you know, people are very now-thinking, maybe that doesn't have many legs, but it certainly would be an interesting idea, and we see it in the OPEB trust fund. So, I think there's big things to discuss and understand. I don't necessarily think they go down to the level of planning cruisers, and, and, you know, mowers, and things like that, I don't think those should raise the level of this, but I think that's what we have to hash out as a team, you know, what do we want these people, what do we want this potential committee involved in and caring about? And what is their actual scope and goal? And then, given all the admonishments and, and self deratements we've given ourselves tonight over the fire committee challenge, let's not set the goal so big that they can't, people can't do their job within a certain amount of time, that we need it for every budget here. Right, so you have a lot of challenges in this type of committee, that we have to be careful when we put, if we decide to go forward, how we decide to go forward, and how we decide to structure, and what the, what the charges. And I know that Bud Robertson would like to have a, have a, have a poke at this.
I just wanna clarify one thing, when Josh was talking, and Mark, Mark mentioned also that in, in, in the Charter, the FinCom is responsible for the five-year planning with the Town Finance and Mark, and the Town Manager, and the, that was one of the changes we made, if you remember, John, that we said the FinCom, not just in the budget process, but also the five-year capital, I specifically broken up, the five-year modeling of the operational plan. So, that's already in the Charter, and in fact, that's what we're discussing for the views who weren't here, that's what we're discussing tonight on the fire thing. That's part of what we're talking about tonight, the five-year planning and that, where does it fit? So, that does take place, so it's not, the capital plan also is looked at, not to the degree because of the big items, moving it back and forth is, has not been done, maybe in the way you guys are looking at it, but clearly, the operational budget has, without the capital plan, has been looked at, is looked at, and is still being looked at, as evidenced by the conversation we had tonight. I don't know how many were here, but it was a big, pretty good discussion on it. So, you know, it is being looked at by the FinCom.
Okay. Looking for some more guidance from board, what do you wanna do here?
Well, I don't see any strong sentiment in favor of not proceeding. We had ranked it as our actual top priority in our goals thing.
All goals are created equal.
I know, but in-
All goals are created equal, we decided that at that meeting, there's no number one priority or any, any less priority.
Right, but it was very popular with all of us, and, and definitely was included. I don't sense a, a change of heart from too many of us.
Yeah, I'll get to you in a second, Tom, I apologize. Go ahead, John.
I think it was popular, but I don't think, if any two of us sitting here has the same vision of exactly what MICA is, and it's gonna be, and how it's gonna work, it would be unbelievable. So, we all have some notion, but that hasn't been consolidated into something that's, that's clear and understandable to all of us. And I, and I think we, we owe it to ourselves, and we owe it to the town, to understand as thoroughly as we can what we're trying to create, and why we're trying to, to create it, and have some degree of, of consensus among the members of the board that, that this is the right target, that we, that we're gonna go for, so.
So, we keep it as a goal.
So, Tom, I'll go to you, and then I'll have a rec, I'll make a recommendation after this.
So, it was probably one of the last department heads who was involved with the previous capital planning. It really wasn't as much as another process, but, you know, it was kind of a process. But it was more that, in the end of the day, it was, you had individuals, volunteers, who's as well-hearted as, as all volunteers are, sometimes they just don't know what I do. And as long as I could sit down and explain it to them, they're not gonna know what I do. But if they have somebody who yells loud enough in the other direction for something else, something's gonna get shifted the other direction, because they make more noise. So, take that into consideration whenever you're, you're, especially when it comes to rolling stock, like highway department, DPW, fire, transfer station, police, almost all our stuff is rolling stock, except for a bit, except for buildings.
Can you define that term?
Rolling stock, uh, I use it with certain lifespan.
Thank you.
So, you know, I'm, I'm picking up-
You have to replace them consistently, they're on a consistent replacement cycle.
Yep, and, you know, truck trucks are every other year, the price goes up on us, that's what we have to negotiate around, you know, not negotiate, but to roll around, just to watch for increases and stuff like that. Sometimes some of our stuff is flexible, especially mine, if something didn't get beat up too bad this year. Not, not my larger rolling stock, the smaller rolling stock, yeah, I can let this one for another year, so if something else needs to take a priority. Mark is very good at handling that. When it, when it comes to doing that, to get things to balance out, I can remember in the past when it didn't work so well, I mean, I haven't had such nice equipment as I do, as we do now. We didn't get it, we didn't get it consistently, it was sporadic, and a lot of it was because it was, we yelled a lot. And I wasn't always the one to go out and yell at town meetings, so.
What did you say, it's because of what?
Who yells the loudest.
Okay.
You know, you get, you get a special interest group who says this should be done more than, than I, they should get it first before the next person. It wasn't delegated by one person, it was a, it was a group of people, so. Take that into consideration when you think this, or maybe what aspect of a capital plan you wanna delegate to a committee or something.
Sure.
Past experience, it's happened, so.
So, as has been mentioned, we have a, we have a potential goal on this. We're in the process of defining those goals down to some form of SMART, so that we can come back and, and, and vote them in as the board's goals for this, this year. Typically, during that process, members get assigned as ownership. One or more member gets assigned as ownership of those goals. What I recommend we do is wait till we have that goal, wait till we have the discussion on, is the goal, you know, worded and, and metric'd the way we want it to do, and then we assign individuals to it, and they proceed down with the first-pass proposal of this committee, and then, once that's available, we can debate it. But then at least someone owns, taking those, that feedback, and getting us to the point where we can have potentially a charge that we at least have compromised enough to agree upon for what this committee may, may, would, would and would not be, by the way, and then move forward. So, I don't think anything can be done tonight on this, other than we kinda agreed that we all kinda want something, that might be something like a capital planning, maybe, and wait till we have a goal and an owner of that goal to, to actually make it happen. Josh?
When are we finalizing our goals?
It's on the agenda for the twenty-eighth.
That is correct.
So, after we finalize our goals, could we make as a goal for this committee that we're talking about, assuming that we all still want it, which I believe we do? Can we put a date certain to create the charge for this committee?
Yeah.
As part of the goal?
That would be part of the metric of the goal, the time-bound challenge.
So, since we don't meet again, and we're finalizing our goals on the twenty-eighth, might I suggest by May thirty-first of two thousand nineteen?
I think I sent out a draft of the goals with particular dates.
You sent it out, I didn't see a date associated with the formation of that.
All right, maybe I'll, I'll update it, but I agree with you, you should have a date.
But if we're going to vote on our goals, there's are some things that we should put certain. So, I'm just suggesting that, because we're not gonna have anything in place for this town meeting, or for this budget cycle.
That's correct.
So.
And I expect that there'll be some of that discussion on timelines, and, and when deliveries are on the twenty-eighth, as we refine and accept our goals. So, May thirty-first is a good suggestion, we'll see, you know, what we debated out on the twenty-eighth, right?
Oh, Josh, I put March thirty-first, so I like yours better, May thirty-first.
Yeah, I think that this is something that really has to be crafted and discussed, and like you said, we need a first draft of this, and we need to assign it to individuals. I'd be happy to work on this, in so much as, this was one of my goals from last time around, at least under the major initiatives.
Yeah.
And now we've defined this a little harder, so I'd be happy to work on it, but that said, let's move that to the twenty-eighth.
Okay, so, item number six is, oh, Mr. Geiger, I apologize.
I would like to encourage everybody who hasn't, in, in the very recent time, looked at what SMART goals are all about, to do a little reading, it's not terribly complicated. But if we get to SMART goals, there're gonna be dates.
Is there something that was provided, or you could provide about SMART?
You can type SMART goals on the internet and find more, more videos of what it's all about, and how to use it, and, and written documents than you can imagine. It's been around quite a while, and I, and I was gonna like, take one of six minutes that I thought was pretty good, and send it out to everybody, but then I decided, nah, maybe I just suggest people look at this stuff. It's important that we understand it.
I can bring an example to the meeting, so that we have at least a guideline to measure against on the twenty-eighth, so we make sure we cross all the, all the letters off of it. All the numbers off the thing. Okay, is that, John, I apologize, are you, okay, thank you. Already moved on to item number seven.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I set aside time, just in case the board had any questions after last week's budget presentation, any additional information you want. I know we're meeting with the Finance Committee on the twenty-sixth, but it's been my practice in the past years, that right after I make the budget presentation, we put it on the agenda for each meeting thereafter, until such time as the budget is finalized, so. Don't have to take any action on this tonight, it's on there, just in case you have any questions. I would suggest we wait until the meeting with the FinCom on the twenty-sixth, and then take it from there.
Does the board wish to review the capital plan, since it was part of a previous item?
I'm not sure I understand.
We'll do that in conjunction with the Finance Committee on Saturday.
Okay.
We don't.
All right, so, thank you, all right, moving on.
Mr. Chairman, under Other Business, you have three items that you need to discuss tonight.
Sure, so, team, we have as one of our previous feedback items, and it was requested to keep it, to bring it forward as an agenda item, and I think this is Member Pine's sponsoring here for a ballot question review focus, so, Member Pine, I'll let you take this away.
I don't recall sponsoring this.
I don't recall sponsoring this.
Okay, I'll let Mr. Deegan take it away.
I recall sponsoring this.
All right. I apologize for my mistake.
Yeah, that's okay. I think that after the most recent election, where there was a question concerning marijuana and zoning on there, that there was enough concern from the public, that people did not know what they were voting for, what a yes/no vote meant, yes-or-no vote meant. That said, I think from hearing the public feedback, it would make sense for us, next time we are formulating a ballot question, that there be a focus review group to read the question as worded, see if they understand it, if they don't understand it, send it back for a rewrite, but there definitely needs to be a yes explanation, what yes means, and a no explanation, what no means, because I think there was some ambiguity in the understanding of what we could and couldn't do. And I think the town manager did clarify that after the election. And I think, Mark, that you said for local initiative ballot questions, that it is okay to have a yes and a no explanation on the ballot. So, with that said, I think it's imperative that we learn from the past and move to the future. So I would like to see a committee formulated to be put together to be a test sample and to understand if folks do understand what is being proposed on a future ballot question.
All right, Sean?
Wouldn't the way to get that kicked off, kicked off, Josh, be that we establish a policy that say there will be one? Absolutely. And whatever additional information we need to put there about how it's selected and so forth. And then that becomes policy till somebody wants to change it. So, in so much as the town clerk is in charge of elections, and while we, as a board, are the only ones that can authorize a ballot question, is that correct? I think that a member of this board, working in conjunction with the town manager and the town clerk, should work together to do exactly what you said, John.
Get feedback from some random people?
Well, no, before we do that, set up a policy that mandates that, and draft the policy.
Get the board to approve it.
Then bring the policy to this board for approval.
I see.
And then, after that point, put together a committee of individuals that would be that sample, so to speak, that would represent them, as well as, as part of the policy, I do believe we should stipulate or at least suggest who writes the yes position explanation and who writes the no, because we have used town council in the past.
The law says that there's nobody that's town council.
I understand that, but I think that...
The law says what? I'm sorry, what did you say?
If there's nobody to advocate for what a yes vote means and for what a no vote would mean, that the default goes to town council. And this is not a slight on current council or former council in any way, shape, or form, but lawyers have a way of writing things that aren't always easy to understand. So...
That's just a fact, Josh, that's not a slight.
Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement, but just to clarify, I believe that our town clerk has the, is delegated to choose or request who writes the yes and the no.
But to get back to John's point, I think that we need to write something as a policy.
Yes.
And put a policy in place first. So if the board is amicable to moving forward with this, I would volunteer to work with the town manager and the town clerk to get that draft done.
Any objection from the board?
No, I, can I just make one comment? I would just point out that part of what may have contributed to our failure in the October one, or November one, was that we were under a very tight timeline, because, as you may recall, we had a town meeting on October 1st, and then we had to prepare everything for a ballot that was on November 6th, as I recall, and so things had to be written and finalized and gotten into print. So, as you write your policy, please remember that there may be time constraints, so. But I think the policies definitely say we will always have a what a yes vote means and what a no vote means, that would have clarified a whole lot of the ambiguity this time, for sure.
I get it.
Allison?
So I just want to throw out there, I have no objection to anything I'm hearing or for Josh taking this on. I think since one of our goals is potentially to go through all of the policies, we may want to, at some point, kind of stop bringing them up one at a time like this, and just batch them.
We don't have a policy on this.
Understood, and that's part of the intent of going through all of our existing policies, comparing the way the goal is written, we were going to try and identify ones we should have. I'm just throwing it out there.
I appreciate that, all right. Just trying to follow the board's guidance on asking for things we put on the agenda that we can discuss. I don't know how to reconcile them both together.
No, there's nothing to reconcile, I'm just throwing it out there.
I appreciate it. Is this done? We're done, we'll move forward? Everybody's agreement?
Yes, please.
As long as you all concur.
I didn't hear any objections, so in the absence of those, I think that's concurrence.
Mark, see if we could set up a meeting, please?
I have no, Josh, absolutely.
And we'll try and get it back in short order, in the next few weeks.
All right, this one, I know the sponsor is Mr. Geiger. I will pause for a moment and note that, if you allow me to interrupt, John, there's been a question, can we get a, do we have a status on the victual, victual, victu...
Common, common.
Common victory license for the temple?
They applied for it, and it's going to be on your agenda for the 28th.
Okay, so thank you. So pause for interruption, John, go ahead with...
I'm going right there. What is this?
So that's basically the cover sheet that goes with the liquor licenses to the ABCC. Each applicant has to sign an actual form from the ABCC, and I have to submit it. That basically says that we didn't have anybody that didn't apply, and we didn't reject any for this calendar year.
So by leaving it blank and saying not applicable, that's what that means?
Correct, yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now I can sign it.
All right.
Okay, I actually saw something, I think, on Talk About Groton, somebody put a message in there that said, "Oh my gosh, there's no more plastic bags when you go shopping in Westford." And I thought, that's kind of interesting. I have some property down in Plymouth, and I know they went through a couple of years ago banning thin plastic bags throughout the town, and it's a much bigger town than we are. And so I just asked myself, I wonder if you've ever thought about it? We're a very environmentally conscious culture here in town, and these little skinny plastic bags are, nothing good about them when you put them in the context of what, the environment. So I said, "Well, I'll just ask the question if the board's interested in pursuing it." I went out and found eight, and I gave you another one tonight, nine bylaws that surrounding towns, including, Plymouth is kind of far away, but I grabbed theirs because I knew they had one, but Lincoln, Concord, Lexington, Westford...
Where I live, Grafton and Shrewsbury also have.
Right. Just so people could get a feel for what, I mean, they're all a tiny bit different, but generally they're attempting to reduce the, to reduce the number of non-recyclable plastic bags from being used. And, let's see, last week I had to get something at CVS in Westford, and they gave me a bag, and it's three, it's three mils thick, and it says right on it, tested for 125 uses, and that's okay, because it meets how they wrote their requirement. But others do that plus push for the reusable bags, and of course, this one was a hybrid, you know, you get 125, you know, you go light on your groceries, that's my only reaction when I looked. I was going to bring it tonight, but, so, that's what it's there for. If there's interest, I think we have lots of things to look at and can fairly rapidly put together a draft out, a potential bylaw. So what's the board's, you know, what's the board's feeling about that, however it is?
Allison?
So I support this, I think it's something that a lot of folks are doing anyway. My only concern would be that I wouldn't want to encourage the kind of bag that you got the other day, John, that's kind of rated for 120 uses, but still realistically going to go in the trash pretty rapidly. But I, I would support this.
That just happens to be the way Westford, you know, wrote theirs, but every one of them, some of them say it has to be thicker than three mils, some of them say two and three quarter mils, you know, and some of them just say, get rid of it all, yep, so...
Yeah.
Does the board want me to work with John to draft a proposal to include on the spring town meeting, Mark?
We'll have to come back to the board.
Come back to the board.
I'm also in favor of this. One question that I have is whether, should we go forward with the green communities designation? Whether this is something that would give us credits on the energy reduction thing that we need to do? And if so, is there any benefit in holding off? But I don't think there probably is.
Should ask Kelly Thursday.
We can probably learn that Thursday night.
Thursday night, you'll be able to find out if there's any connection there.
Right. The other thing I would say is, rather than, well, I skimmed through the several that you sent us, it might be most useful for us to duplicate the closest town to us, which I think is Westford that just passed, so that, although if they're the town where you got the semi-acceptable bag that is still a disposable bag, maybe that isn't such a great model, because I think some of them were a little bit clearer about not using them at all, right? I'm definitely in favor of it as a policy.
So does the board want me to work with John and bring back a proposal for your review? Will do. All right, give me a second, I'll get up your next item on the, before you move on.
Yeah, Mr. Deegan had a comment on this.
No, I mean, I'm fine, and I have no problem supporting something like this, it's good for the environment. You just have to really be careful about these single-use bags and making it to that and not, not having it be trash bags, and not having it be the little clear plastic bags you stick your produce in, in fish, and things like that, that you don't want all over the place. So while I quickly glanced at some of the stuff that John sent, the other thing I would suggest is that we put a reasonable date to begin this process, so larger businesses that use plastic bags can either reallocate their supply to another store in a community that doesn't have it, or use up stuff they bought and had printed upon. That's it. Several of the communities gave, like, six to nine months advance warning, you know, they passed it, but it was to be effective six to nine months out there, because the Westford one just went into effect on January 1st.
Mm-hmm.
But they approved it.
Last March.
Right.
Presumably.
All right, I saw Mr. Fudd and I saw Ms. Sartini.
Ms. Sartini.
I guess, I think it's a good idea too, the question is, in the process of doing this, do you go to the big uses, producers in the community, such as Shaws and CVS, and talk to them, just so they don't all of a sudden see this thing like, whoops, the Board of Selectmen have done this, and what are you talking about? We don't even aware of this. I just, I think it's a good idea, but I just don't know what the impact is to those guys, and I'm sure if they have towns where they have a Shaws and they're already doing it, that's great, but I think, I think that's an outreach that should definitely happen as part of the beginning, part of the, you may not change your mind, but they should know that this is going to happen.
Well, I think we should have a public hearing as part of the process of considering this, and make sure they all know about it, and they can come in.
Or just knock on their doors and say, because I mean, you guys are probably like five or six big users, I mean, producers of plastic bags in this town, this town's not that big, you know who they are. And like I said, maybe the, Westford has a CVS, so maybe they do it, and of course you want to go all not plastic, then find a town that's all not plastic, and they have CVSs too, so there's a way they do it, it's just letting them know it's coming potentially, that's all.
Yep.
Ms. Sartini?
Just a quick question.
You want to grab the microphone, please? Thank you.
Do you also anticipate including the orange plastic bag that I buy to take to the transfer station?
No.
First off, those, how many mils are those?
They're big, but we need to continue to use those bags.
We got to hook some bag.
I'll find it.
We'll have to explore that, Connie.
It doesn't include?
Well, it could, we don't know. I don't know what the alternatives are for bags to do that.
I would just...
Just trying to get groceries on. No, it's single-use bags used at checkout, that's what this says in Westford. Yep. And I have no problem agreeing with this. You start talking about, you know, white kitchen bags and black lawn bags and orange bags and all these things, I mean, yeah, it'd be nice to get rid of plastics, but until you can come up with an alternative, right now we're talking about the bags that are typically used in Shaws or Moissons.
Grocery store.
Grocery store. Correct. And retail. Retail. Retail outlets.
Let's be really careful here about saying what's good for the environment, what's not good for the environment, because there's a lot of conflicting data out there on long-term gain and not long-term gain of certain types of things, just like, don't assume your electric car is best for the environment, because it actually is very destructive to the environment, so just be careful, the manufacturing process matters a lot, so...
So, plastic bags are good for the environment?
There are alternatives to plastic bags which are not as good for the environment.
Exact.
So, and that's what the caution is, always beware, when you ban something, you may create a worse monster. All right, moving on to the next item on the agenda, there was, this is continuation of the discussion from last week. While I was reviewing our policies, I pulled out the excerpt and sent that to the board, declaring that all committees must be decided by a majority vote. As such, I scoured the appropriate resources to find the best mathematically and fact-driven analyses of what majority voting means. This is a lot to consume, and it's very complex. I would encourage everybody to take this home, dissect it, and come back with which of these you would like to follow, and then debate that. And I have, I have to give you my opinion on which of these is most effective, but I think that you should try to figure this out.
Can we try and guess which one you like?
You can try.
Where, where, this doesn't appear to be in our packet.
It got emailed to you after the fact, it got left, it got left out by mistake.
So it was emailed late, late this afternoon, is that accurate?
I didn't email it up.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I, it's in your Google Drive?
It's in the Google Drive, I apologize.
Could you have hard copies?
Could you email it? Because I don't look at the Google, I look at the email.
Yeah, it's in your drive right now. I think it was my request to have it not emailed due to OML issues, because these are my opinions of the best analyses of majority.
Is your opinion there?
No, these are my opinions of the best majority decision.
Can I ask a point of clarification? Currently, the way we do it is the plurality method, is that correct?
No, we actually use the majority method on selecting our goals, and we actually use majority method to select the fire station name.
Okay.
But it's a, it's an iterative majority process.
So...
But if there's five of us here, and three of us vote in favor of somebody, and what you're saying is, that's not how you would like to see it move forward, you'd like to see potentially one of these alternative methods.
It only becomes a challenge when there's multiple, multiple people, you have multiple, multiple seats, not necessarily multiple candidates. If there's one seat, it's easy, even sometimes there's two seats, it's easy. It's when you get to five or six seats and eight or 10, you know, even six or seven people for those seats, it becomes very challenging. And the analysis done by Free Love, um, sorry, Free Love, excuse me, I forget the name here, the Free Vote analysis is very good at describing why certain methodologies are better for actually having an appropriately majority outcome.
So is there more to see on the screen? Because I don't have it here, we have, we'd have to close.
You've got it in front of you too, in a printout.
We should use the fish.
We have a printout?
Yes, a printout, given to you with this.
Oh, oh, thank you, thank you. I didn't, I failed to look at this. Oh, oh, thank you, thank you. I didn't, I failed to look at this.
So, is there anything we need to discuss here tonight, or just review this in advance of a future meeting?
Let me know when you guys are ready, having, having dissected this information and would like to discuss, yes.
I'm going to defer to you mathematicians and go along with the consensus.
Well, I, Barry, I really want to thank you for providing this, because this was, this is really what I, I really appreciate it that you did that.
And again, this is just my opinion on the best resources for dissecting this, please do your own investigation, if you want to.
You're saying it's your opinion, but it's your opinion of what you gathered and shared with us, right?
That's correct.
You're in an open meeting.
You didn't write anything.
No, I did not, my goodness.
Thank you.
Are there any ongoing issues we need to review tonight?
I don't know, Mr....
I have no update on any ongoing issues, Ms. Deegan.
I would like to make a motion to approve the workshop meeting minutes of January 3rd as presented.
I have a comment on those. I, I hate...
Let's get a good second first before we have discussion.
Second.
Thank you.
Let me get it opened up, please.
Under discussion.
This is the one that John...
Correct.
...right, about our, our discussion. I'm sorry to take the time on this and delay this, but I hate having something go into the record that is inaccurate. Your two charts, your attachments, one and two, have the incorrect preference numberings over there on, they are the ones that were created before I sent my corrected version in. If you could just take those out so that we have the, the left-hand numbers we need for the, to make sense of your minutes. We do not need those other numbers.
You don't need these, these numbers here?
Yes.
We can take those out.
Well, these were, I put those there because that's what we were looking at at the meeting.
No, those are the wrong ones. They were corrected. Do you remember? I, I screwed up and I, it had to be corrected and another version was sent out.
I think without prejudice, they're not necessary to, oh, because you're listing all 23, yeah, we at least have to identify which ones have been, were chosen, because he's listing all 23.
Because I think the 23 sheet included the changes.
The numbers on the left, yes, we have to include. The numbers on the right are irrelevant to the minutes and they are incorrect.
Well, whatever you want, people.
What?
Are the, is, I'm sorry, let me, let me ask to say my question again. Are these only the ones we discussed in the meeting? Because we'd already triaged the rest in this appendix.
You'll notice when you get to the third appendix, which is the one you put together, there's no numbers.
Okay.
In fact, in the text, it says that we agreed, that we agreed that everything was equal from that point. But prior to that point, we were discussing things that weren't necessarily agreed to be equal, and we were reducing them into a bowl of eight equals.
Right, but those numbers on the right, John, are the ones that, that Mark created from an incorrect set that I gave him by mistake.
Well, you can do two things. I can go find the right ones.
You could, or...
Or you can take them out.
I think taking them out is easier on everyone.
Well, let's see what the rest of the committee thinks. Do you want to take them out?
I do not feel strongly on this. I'm fine with taking them out.
I'm fine with taking them out, too.
We'll take them out, easy.
Thank you.
Thank you, rather than asking you more work, John.
I mean, basically, what I could do was...
And it's on both of them, you have two attachments, exhibit one and exhibit two, both of them?
Well, one of them is, was organized by the left column, the goal ID numbers, and the other was by the goal preference numbers.
But in both cases, those numbers on the right don't need to be there, are not right.
Alright, so, uh...
Well, I can reduce that down to one.
Third's a seventh's minutes, I'm sorry.
We're talking about the third minutes, the meetings, the workshop meeting for when we do the goals, it's a goals meeting. Alright, with that amendment, is everybody okay with these goals as amended? With this, sorry, is minutes as amended?
Yes.
Yeah.
Alright, can I get a, uh, we already have a, excuse me, I shouldn't even ask, I should do, as amended, can we call the vote as amended, please, without prejudice? Alright, as amended, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? I heard that unanimous.
Okay, let me confirm the modifications, okay? On exhibit A, I'm going to reduce, that's the one that's sorted by number. I'm going to just eliminate the goal preference number. And since the second page was merely the same thing sorted differently in exhibit two, I'm just going to eliminate it.
That sounds like a wise idea.
Okay, that's what I'm going to do. Everybody be happy?
Yes, everybody will be happy, at least for...
Give that to us, John, and we'll...
I'll get it to you.
Post them online.
Right.
Alright.
I move that we approve the regularly scheduled meeting minutes of January 7th as presented.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded, is there any discussion on January 7th minutes?
January 3rd, oh.
January 7th minutes.
Moved and seconded, but we haven't voted on January 3rd, right?
Yeah, we just did.
We just did.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Is there any discussion on January 7th minutes?
No.
Uh, alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition, any abstentions? Sounds unanimous. Oh, Josh, Josh abstains. That's right, you were actually remote for that meeting, you did not have to abstain. I called you at the beginning, even if you didn't participate, I called you remote and we did everything roll call because of that, because of the potential for you to be remote. Did you watch it?
But it says...
Watched the whole meeting.
So then, I know you, so just so you know, it's okay.
I abstained.
Alright, that's fine. Yes, Ms. Nugget?
I move that we enter into executive session pursuant to MGL Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Clause 2, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel per purifier chief's contract with no intent to return to general open session.
And the chair does declare it's a valid reason for executive session.
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call vote to enter an executive session, please.
Pine, aye.
Yes.
Deegan, aye.
Nugget, aye.
Yes, we'll take a brief recess while we shut down the...
You can go to my office, just go to his office.
Yeah, that's right, so.
There's nothing, there's nothing electronic.